Welcome to Fresno City College for tonight's Fresno City Council Candidates Forum. And we have four candidates with us, two from District Three, which covers parts of west of 99, southwest Fresno, and parts of downtown. And we have Miguel Arias and Tate Hill. Welcome to the forum, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And from District Seven, which runs through the heart of the city, we have Nelson Asparza and Brian Whelan.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Tonight's forum is brought to you by GV Wire, CMAC, and also Fresno City College. And before we begin the questions, I'd like to bring up Dr. Carol Goldsmith of Fresno City College.
Well, welcome to Fresno City College. I wanted to make sure all of our students who are here tonight take special note that in order to get involved in politics, one has to show up and listen and learn. So, candidates, I trust that this will be a wonderful debate and discussion, and please remember that this is a place of learning, so we are welcoming you and looking forward to learning more about you and how you're going to lead our city. So, good luck to each and every one of you. Again, welcome to Fresno City College. Thank you, and have a good evening.
And we do have members from a Fresno City College communications class taught by Channel Thirty's Mr. Baker, and they're going to be grading the candidates tonight on their persuasive skills. So, welcome to the class, to the beautiful old administration building here at Fresno City College. It's one of my favorite buildings in Fresno, and we're fortunate to have it as a venue for this event. So, let's warm things up a little bit by introducing yourself and then describing in one word the most important personal quality you would bring to the city council, and tell us how you would use it. And we will start with Miguel Arias.
Sure.
Forty-five seconds, Miguel.
Forty-five seconds. Well, welcome to our beautiful campus at Fresno City College. We are a college district that serves 45,000 students across four counties. And a little bit about myself is I grew up picking crops as a field worker out in the west side, and I've worked my way through our public education system the last four years, serving on this college board, where we're actually building new colleges specifically, two brand-new campuses in south Fresno. And the best quality, or the strongest quality, I would argue, is that I'm a parent. I'm a parent of a six-year-old and a 12-year-old little girl. And I will bring that perspective to the city council. And that's why, for me, supporting Measure P is a very simple response, because I know that our kids don't have any quality parks in our part of town.
Thank you. Tate Hill, what's that one word? I know it's hard to wrap somebody up in one word, but what's that one word that describes you? Tell us a little bit about yourself, and then how would you would apply that trait to being a city councilman?
Now, as one that's grown up in the district for the last 30 years, I grew up in southwest Fresno and now live in the tower district. And I've had the opportunity to learn a lot of lessons from my neighbors and family and teachers that instilled a number of values in me, and the big one was integrity. When I think about the challenges of our south part of our city, is people want to make sure that their government is responsive to their needs, that people have a fair chance and opportunity for economic mobility, and that the resources are going where they should be going. And so, I really want to make sure that people feel good about their government and their representative.
Nelson Asparza, what's that one word that captures you? How will you use it on the city council?
Forty-five seconds?
Forty-five seconds.
Oh, good evening, folks. Welcome to Fresno City College. It feels great to be on home field territory. This is actually where I work as an economics instructor. I have the privilege of serving the District Seven community specifically and our community at large in that capacity, as well as my capacity as a Fresno County Board of Education trustee representing most of the district already. If I had to describe myself in one word with respect to this campaign, Tate kind of hinted at it, but I'm going to say responsive. I've never been accused of not responding to an email, a text message, you know, any message or conversation via whatever channel it may have came through. And that's going to be the most important part, one of the most important bases for any city council office and city council member, because communication is key to getting things done for our community, knowing what the community needs, and moving the ball together, not just as one individual.
Thank you. Brian Whelan?
Thank you very much for having me and for everyone that's here. My name is Brian Whelan. I grew up in Fresno here and attended high school in this district. It's District Seven, which is in the heart of Fresno. And I'm looking, I'm running for the reason I want to raise up neighborhoods that I live in. I've lived in this district going on 10 years. Last couple of years, I've been trying to get people out and engaged in various programs, including neighborhood watch programs, and kind of building the community with the community itself. One of the, I guess, words to describe me and my vision and going forward as a council person would be excited. I'm excited about the opportunity to serve. I'm excited about the possibilities that exist in Fresno. I love Fresno, and I want to see the great things that are coming forward.
Thank you. And we're going to keep it right here with Brian, but before I ask the next question, I just want to make it clear that the candidates from District Five were invited to attend. Both of those candidates confirmed their participation. One notified us this morning that she was pulling out, and then the other candidate notified us shortly before we went on air that he too was pulling out. But we're glad to have these four candidates here debating the future of Fresno. And Brian, high-speed rail in the news this week in multiple publications, websites throughout the state of California, with the primary focus that high-speed rail must be retooled, and also that previous supporters are now backing away from high-speed rail. We know that Fresno's made a huge investment in this. We know that the state of California has invested in the Central Valley. So, my question is, can you tell us if you're for high-speed rail? And if you are, why, and what it means to Fresno? If you're against it, tell us why, and also, how would you meet future transportation needs? So, we'll go up to two minutes on this one.
Okay. So, I was initially against high-speed rail, because my concern is that there were other needs for those funds, but that has come and gone, so the train has literally left the station. At this point, I support high-speed rail, and I think that it's important to realize the positive potential that it has for this area and to be circumspect about how we, as a community, are going to take advantage of the great opportunities that it's going to bring. One of the real big concerns, though, I have about high-speed rail, which would not be something that would be addressed by myself as a councilperson or city council at all, is really how the state is managing the high-speed rail. I, in my professional capacity, I've represented a lot of people that have had their businesses acquired by the high-speed rail. I've had the pleasure to negotiate, in fact, with the city and also to negotiate eminent domain actions with the high-speed rail. And one of the things that struck me about that process, and that you've probably read about in the newspapers recently, is that the delay of acquiring land has given rise to exponential costs. So, six years ago, it used to be X, and now it's, you know, 3X to purchase the same land that's needed for the high-speed rail. So, my concern is how is it going to get funded? How is it going to be responsibly run as a construction project? How are these multiple lawsuits or multiplicity of lawsuits going to be addressed? I know that there's some legislation to take care of some of that within Sacramento. But really, from a city perspective, I think it's an exciting opportunity. From a taxpayer perspective, I have a lot of concerns and reservations about the business plan and whether or not that is going to be something that actually makes economic sense. So, I'd like to see, I'd like to see some more information from the, you know, the business side of things about how it's actually going to get funded. But I think we, as a city, need to seize the opportunity and act responsibly.
Thank you. Nelson Asparza, what about high-speed rail? Where do you stand?
Sure, sure. I voted for Prop 1A back in 2008. I was excited, I still am excited, about the, you know, about the possibilities of having high-speed rail in California. The difference between now and then, while I'm still supportive, I can now acknowledge that this is going to be one of those public projects that is ultimately not for us, not for our generation. It's going to be for the next generation and those generations to come. So, I think we have to look at this more as an investment rather than, rather than spending. And you've kind of brought up the perspective of the media this week, and I think we have to separate the political from the policy. There's always the pros and cons side, there's always going to be the soundbites. But from a policy perspective, we have to hone in and make sure we're executing the rest of this project in the most efficient way possible. I am concerned that the funding stream is not solid, not necessarily there, and that's something that our state leaders need to work on and figure out. But I still think it's an investment worthwhile pursuing to date. With respect to our city, I think you asked about transportation issues, we have started to invest as Fresno has started to prepare for high-speed rail coming to the valley. And I've spoken before about the need to plan our city in such a way that we can capitalize, you know, first mile, last mile, getting to a train station, but from a broader perspective, a much broader perspective. You know, we recently, BRT here in Fresno, Bus Rapid Transit, I think the verdict is still out on that, but I think we are going towards some modes of transportation and planning our transportation before really deciding how we want to plan the city. And I think the city we have is a city you're meant to drive in, unlike other cities in California and on the other side of the country. So, I think we need to, you know, make decisions about the planning of our city before we or in conjunction with how we're going to plan our mode of transportation here in Fresno.
Thank you. Tate Hill, high-speed rail, a lot of problems, some people are backing away. What's your position on high-speed rail?
No, I've actually been a supporter of high-speed rail for several years, seeing the opportunities that high-speed rail brings to not only the Central Valley, but Fresno, but also particularly District Three in south Fresno, with a planned train station right at the, in the heart of District Three. And so, you know, having the opportunity to work with businesses for the last 10 to 12 years, one of the things we always share with them about a business plan is that it should change and it should modify with the needs of the business, the conditions in the current state. And you should never put a business plan on the shelf and say, "What I planned five years ago is what is, needs to happen today." And so, business plans should evolve. I think with some of the challenges that we're having around high-speed rail because of cost of land, cost of construction costs, that we may have to look at alternative ways to implement the high-speed rail process. I think we've already began to start to do that with the pathway to the San Francisco Bay Area and looking at how we can still utilize this as a valuable resource for the Central Valley. Given our challenges around air quality and asthma and health, we need to really consider about, consider different modes of transportation for our community in our region. If we're serious about reducing asthma rates, if we're serious about being an urban center, we need to have multiple forms of transportation. I believe high-speed rail is one, leveraging the resources through Amtrak, which is, has extremely high ridership, and also utilizing public transportation like BRT and other sources, and then making sure that we do development that's concurrent with that kind of transportation.
Thank you. Miguel Arias?
Sure. Let me start off by just reminding the general public of the benefits of high-speed rail thus far. Not only is a future station planned for District Three, but if it wasn't for high-speed rail, we wouldn't have the improvements along the 99, on McKinley, the Clinton interchange, the Ashland interchange, and coming forward, the Shaw interchange, all of which, and the replacement of the downtown bridge, all of which would have never been possible if it wasn't for high-speed rail, because this city never had the resources to make those significant improvements. Secondly, when you look back at big, you know, milestone legacy projects, the Big Dig, the California Aqueduct, Hejedi Dam, those are huge infrastructure projects that you're intentionally investing for the future of a state and the future of an economy, and that's what high-speed rail is. Do we still have to make sure that it's done as cost-effective as possible? Yes. And I think one of those key things I've been missing for years now is that there hasn't been common planning between the cities and high-speed rail itself. The city of Fresno approved its general plan. The city of Fresno has multiple specific plans that it's approved, as I'm assuming Bakersfield does too and the other cities around us, but none of them have really integrated the future of high-speed rail into those plans. And if we had aligned our planning process together, we would have been able to get ahead of some of the cost overruns, really primarily focused on acquisition of property. And I would be the first to say that, as a public entity, when you're expanding public facilities like we are in State Center, we're building two colleges in south Fresno, including expanding Fresno City College, the last resort is always eminent domain. That's why there tends to be a higher cost for acquiring private property. And I'm supportive of high-speed rail, ensuring that they do everything possible not to take somebody's private property in order to get the rail done. But again, this is a legacy project for the state of California, and I said before, as a father, I clearly know that this high-speed rail is probably going to be for my kids.
Thank you. Another big issue right now is Measure P. That's the Fresno Parks Tax Proposal, and I'm folding in a question from the audience with the question that I had prepared. And we're going to start with Tate Hill on this one. And one is crime out of control in Fresno. Where do you stand on Measure P, the sales tax for public trails, for parks, trails, and arts? And finally, as a council member, what will be your approach to budgeting? And how will you bring Fresno's the things they need, reducing blight, reducing homelessness, perhaps hiring more police officers? That's a lot. I hope you all memorized it. And let's address this in two minutes and touch on those issues you want to address.
So, to solve all of Fresno's urban issues in two minutes, I'll try.
You can do it.
First of all, I would say I'm supportive of Measure P. I believe we need to make the investment within our community, our city. And I think really the concept of us believing that we should make the investment within our communities, whether it's around our parks and amenities, whether it's public safety, we deserve those kind of investments into our city, and not only we do, we deserve them, but we need them. And so, I am supportive of us having the resources to actually maintain our parks, to make them better, to make them safer. I have very young nephews and nieces that are just a half a block away from a park, and my sister does not feel comfortable taking them to that park, because that park is not safe and is not well-maintained. And so, we need to make sure we have the resources to provide the quality of life that the entire city should be able to experience, not just north parts of Fresno, our affluent parts of Fresno, but all parts of Fresno should have access to quality green space and amenities. That said, also know that public safety is a top priority within our community, our city. As I talk to residents, it's one of the biggest complaints and concerns that they have. And so, I am also in support of us looking at resources and ways to bring a public safety tax if Measure P is to pass, to make sure we can have more patrolling officers, we have the infrastructure that we need to support police and fire with more responsive police units. But again, I think this concept of understanding, we deserve the investment in our city, and if we're going to be a great city, we need to make a great investment.
Thank you. Miguel Arias, addressing parks, but then also addressing the obvious and pressing needs that Fresno has.
Let me be very frank when it comes to public safety. You know, I, almost two years ago now, I published an outfit in the Fresno Bee asking for an honest conversation in the city in pursuing a public safety tax. And that's based on my own analysis and my own experience calling 911 and having experience being placed on hold. Is public safety underfunded? Absolutely. It is significantly underfunded in the city of Fresno and has been for decades. The folks who were elected to deal with it failed to do so. Is crime at an increase? No. In southwest, we have the lowest crime in the city right now. We've had significant decreases in violent crime. We've had significant decreases in shootings. 22% decrease in 2016, in 2017, 16%, and 2018, a 37% decrease in shootings. Now, does that mean that every issue gets resolved with more police officers and firefighters? Absolutely not. When I'm walking and talking to people, what they care about is also quality of life issues, the transient populations, the lack of a police response, the petty crime, the smashing grabs, the homeless population. For me, Measure P and public safety are separate and apart. Great cities don't make you choose between one and the other. They figure out how to do both, as David McDonald said recently in a press conference. And in my area, they have built parks on top of landfills, on top of junkyards, underneath freeway passages and interchanges. We have the highest pollution in the city of Fresno. We should now be put in a position to choose whether we have parks or a police officer or firefighter responding to our phone call. As council president in 2020, I will bring forward a public safety initiative to put in place a sustainable and long-term fix to public safety. In the meantime, I would strongly suggest that the city stop waiving impact fees and sales tax to corporations that would otherwise pay for parks, public safety, and streets. We can't just give it away to corporations, then ask taxpayers to increase their own taxes to make up for it.
Tate, would you like to respond to Miguel's prediction that he'll be council president in 2020?
Yes, yes, I definitely would. You know, when you come up to the dais, I will be glad to support a public safety tax. You know, I do agree that we need to make sure we make sufficient investments within our community, and one of the ways that we do that, and the capacity that we do that, is making sure that we have a viable economy, making sure that we support small business, that we increase our tax revenue within the city of Fresno, and that means making investment in small businesses, making investment in an infrastructure that helps to attract businesses into our community. And so, those are the things that I think about as, you know, as one that has worked with small businesses, how do we encourage, support, incentivize business growth that translates to sales and tax revenue for our community, so we can make the investments in public safety?
So, I'll repeat the question. It was a while ago, and we'll start with Nelson Asparza. And basically, the first part is crime out of control in Fresno. Where do you stand on Measure P? And as a council member, what will you do to bring or to, you know, address Fresno's pressing challenges, which we all know?
So, it's very clear that in, not only in District Seven, but throughout the city of Fresno, we have a broken public safety system. And I, you know, I've been on ride-alongs with our firefighters, been on several ride-alongs with our police officers throughout my district. They are underfunded, they are understaffed. But what folks need to understand, it is not just about the sworn officers and about the sworn firefighters. Those folks are on the front lines, they are the first responders. But beneath that, there's a whole layer of infrastructure, such as the dispatchers, the radio communication system, that all matters and supports those efforts. And so, we need to look at our broken public safety system and find a comprehensive way, comprehensive approach to solve, you know, solve crime. We're never going to, never going to be able to completely eradicate it, but we can do a better job. And regardless of the stats, and some people say crime is going up, some people say it's going down, what matters is that folks in District Seven neighborhoods in certain parts of the district don't feel safe. And I hear these stories every day, I'm sure Brian does as well. You know, I was very disappointed in the mayor and his administration, they were not able to put together the support for a dual parks tax and public safety tax. That's water underneath the bridge, and what we have now in front of us is an opportunity to change lives and change the city for generations to come with Measure P. And I'm supporting Measure P, because in my district and our district, you know, Romaine Park and Martin Ray Riley are literally next to freeways. Radio Park, the right time of day is a homeless encampment. And in the city of Fresno, we don't have a publicly funded senior center, and there's a lot of seniors in my district who want to see that in our area of the city. So, that's why I'm supporting Measure P. I want to support those folks who got, you know, tied their shoelaces up, got after it, and were able to get that measure on the ballot, and it's going to change the city. Do you mind if I go a few seconds over just to give my quick budget approach? Sure.
But you can't do it again.
Good luck. You're shot.
Oh, it's not a shot. So, when it comes to budgeting, right, I'm an economics professor here at City College. I'm going to be looking at ways we allocate our city resources, our limited city resources, to get the optimal outcomes. So, where do we want our crime rate to be? You know, what do we want our parks to look like? It's not, it's not about upsizing or downsizing, it's not about big government or small government, it's about right-size government, right-size spending. And so, you know, I look forward to having three town halls per year, doing public budgeting, where, you know, folks in the district can literally come out to town halls and voice their opinions on, you know, how they think money should be spent citywide and with respect to our district.
Thank you. And Brian Whelan, you get the last word on this, and you also get up to two minutes and 30 seconds. You know the question now, so tell us your thoughts, your approach.
Sure. And I'd like to maybe address some of the, some of Nelson's comments too, but there is a significant need for public safety in District Seven. I hear from people constantly, in fact, today I was talking to somebody that lives next to Roosevelt, and they were telling me about, "Hey, this neighborhood's not safe, don't be here after dark." And I said, "Well, look, I'm trying to connect with people, and I got a couple hours to go here." But it's a real concern, and I hear a lot of people telling me, especially people where they only speak Spanish, that, "Hey, there's a next-door neighbor that's cooking meth." And, you know, I haven't said anything, but it kind of scares me. And I think that part of it is trying to get people to come to that comfort level where they can report some of these issues, and that's why I've been trying to, and successfully in some instances, bring people together for neighborhood watch programs, and also to kind of get people to identify and address these issues, which I'd like to do, you know, in a much bigger way, you know, with the resources of the city council office. But with respect to Measure P, my, my real concern initially was kind of the jockeying back and forth that was going over, whether it was going to be public safety or whether it's going to be parks. And I'm, I serve on the board at Storyland Playland, and we kind of came together about four years ago, a group of members of the community, and reopened the parks when they had been shut down temporarily from mismanagement. And the board together took a decision to support Measure P. And one of the things that kind of got me on board too with Measure P is, as Miguel was talking about, he heard when Dave McDonald gave a presentation, Dave is actually a, you know, businessman in the community, and he donated, I think it was like $400,000 to the campaign for Measure P. And what he talked about was something that I had heard about, and it was a commitment that at least Dave was talking about, is hiring 45 to 50 additional police officers as using the funds for that purpose in addition to the funds that were identified for senior centers for green spaces. But there's a need for public safety, and with what was discussed and mentioned, I think that that collectively with the parks, there's a need for parks too, you know? There's, the health and well-being of a, of a city has a lot to do with the park system, and we've got about $100 million in deferred maintenance in the parks. So, with that, I decided I'm going to vote for it. We'll see what happens coming forward on the, on the ballot, but I really do believe that the district has a very significant issue with crime and that really we need to come together kind of as a community to address it.
So, thank you. Before we move on, I just want to be clear, a question, yes or no? No need for amplification, because I want to be clear down the line. If Measure P passes, will you support a future public safety tax? If Measure P is defeated, will you support a joint tax, as was previously proposed? And Miguel, we'll start with you.
Absolutely.
Yes and yes. Nelson?
Yes to both.
And Brian?
Yes, and it depends.
Yes, and it depends.
Yes, and it depends. I need to see what's going to happen with the allocation of funds from the Measure P. So, what was, what I was just talking about with Dave McDonald and the allocation of resources for public safety, if that happens, if the need and the allocation of resources for public safety, if that happens, if the need is met, then I don't know that there's going to be a need for another public safety tax. These taxes on people impact those in our district in a very tremendous way. And so, I want to make sure that, you know, fiscally responsible decisions are made with the information we have.
Bill, I would just add that, that fiscal conservatism should also apply when we're giving away our sales tax to Amazon and Alton the Gap. We gave $70 million away, and the council didn't blink, nor did the mayor.
So, we're going to have a growing Fresno business question. So, there'll be lots of opportunity to address that then. I'd like to point out that two of these men will serve on the Fresno City Council. And earlier this year, there was a joint tax that was proposed, and the city council didn't signal support for it, so Mayor Brand brought it back. So, if Measure P fails, perhaps we will have a, a joint tax in the future. You're watching the Fresno City Council Candidates Forum on CMAC. And tonight's forum is brought to you by GV Wire, CMAC, and Fresno City College. And we're broadcasting from the old administration building on the campus of Fresno City College. So, we've been into two deep policy issues. This question is just sixty seconds. And I know it's a tough one, and you don't like to answer these kinds of questions, but voters deserve to know. What's the first thing that you will accomplish on the Fresno City Council? And we'll start with Nelson Asparza.
Sure. So, I'm a, you know, a big-picture structural policy person. You know, I don't want to just go in there and provide the same Band-Aid fixes the city hall has been providing to District Seven for decades. Yeah, I want to, I want to implement policies that are going to reap benefits for my district and the entire city long-term. And so, I've talked about this with you before, Bill and many others, enhanced infrastructure financing districts and community revitalization investment authorities. And the short of it, the short of that is, you know, I want to tackle economic development. And that does not happen overnight. So, that's going to be first priority, so that we can work on that throughout my four-year term, and hopefully begin to see the benefits, the revenue of the city, and the ability to finance regional infrastructure in my district, and revitalize the blighted neighborhoods and commercial residential properties all throughout District Seven.
Brian Whelan, first thing you'll accomplish on the Fresno City Council?
I would like to focus attention on addressing blight by specifically fixing the code enforcement problem that we've got. There are a lot of houses in the district that have a number of calls for services, because the power is out and people are going in and they're squatting. The city has the ability to appoint a receiver and to take over the property that is blighted, or to condemn the property, and in some instances, take out properties. So, there are a number of houses within the district that suffer from this problem that give rise to really bad criminal issues. But I also would like to point out some very obvious difference between Nelson and I about enhanced infrastructure finance districts, which is very important, because it's, it sounds super fancy. But it's, the concept is called a redevelopment agency, and it was done away with by Governor Brown in 2011 because it was a vehicle for fraud and corruption. And that's coming from Governor Brown. So, those, that's not a policy that can be affected without a lot of crony capitalism that goes on. It's bad, I think, for the city as a whole, and sends us in a very bad direction. We don't want that.
So, Nelson, thirty seconds to respond.
Yeah, happy to respond. So, I want to remind folks that, you know, economic development, economics in general, this is the type of stuff I ate for breakfast in the morning. Brian's a smooth-talking lawyer, can make anything sound bad. And I bet he probably couldn't point out even one example of corruption or fraud with RDAs in the city of Fresno. And if you could, I'm, you know, I'm sure whoever it was probably tied, you know, to financing your campaign.
Do I get ten minutes to respond to that baloney?
No, you get, you get a chance to respond. And thank you, Miguel and Tate, for waiting patiently.
I'm going to borrow Miguel's time for twenty seconds. So, redevelopment agencies were being used to create shopping malls in LA, and they were also taking away from the tax base for schools, okay? And the idea was perpetuated by developers that were able to benefit off of these redevelopment agencies and the funds. And so, in 2011, it was defunded because of rampant problems and corruption. And so, I really don't believe that, you know, in fact, everyone, when you go home, Google, why are RDAs bad? It's not a smooth-talking lawyer or a hard-working businessperson like I am. And I, you know, I'm glad that Nelson eats economics for, for breakfast. I eat, you know, life cereal for breakfast. But I think that what we really need to focus on is cutting to the chase with some of these policies. And if they were bad, and Governor Brown says they're bad, you know, why is it something that's going to be a nifty little fix that really creates bigger problems?
So, we'll leave it right there, and we'll get back to our original six.
Well, Bill, I want to be clear. I was not proposing RDAs. I was proposing the tools that I proposed, which were not RDAs, and they are different. And they were abolished in 2011 to, to fill a $2 billion state budget shortfall.
So, for the clarification of the audience, RDAs are a state agency, and the decision to, to abandon them by Governor Brown were because of some outrageous examples. On the other hand, there are many examples where RDAs really did help the community. And the, the comeback of downtown Fresno probably would not have been possible without RDAs. Maybe the best example of RDA abuse was a four-star golf course in Palm Springs, California, that was brought into a redevelopment agency and made into a five-star golf course. So, certainly, there were abuses on that. Back to the question, and we start with Miguel Arias on this. We know it's tough, but in sixty seconds, when you get on the city council, how are the residents going to know that you're there? What's the first thing you want to accomplish?
Well, before I go there, I want to say that I eat Webos and Toriso for, for breakfast. So, I don't do economics, nor do whatever else.
Can I come over to your house tomorrow?
Yeah. I'll recommend some places for you. The, the first task that I will take on, Bill, as a council member, is to re-establish the District Implementation Committee, because that committee made up of residents was dismantled to make way for Amazon, the altar projects, which resulted in polluting industries, a huge distrust in the city hall and the community, and now litigation that we're, and the city's entering. And not only will I bring it back forward, but I'm going to appoint some very strong residents to that committee to make sure that they're part of the decision-making of what takes place in their neighborhoods. And my hope is to quickly bring forward a dislocation policy to address the potential gentrification of the new revitalization efforts taking place in the, in the district. You know, revitalization's great unless you're the one being moved out. Revitalization's great to create wealth and bring new businesses, unless it's your business being shut down because your rent was doubled and tripled. And I think that needs to be addressed first and foremost.
Thank you. Tate Hill, what's at the top of your to-do list when you get to City Hall?
No, one of the things that is at the top is a comprehensive neighborhood rehab program. And when I think about that and talking with people throughout the entire district, I want to make sure that it's something that benefits West Fresno, the Tower District, downtown, and central west. And so, looking at a comprehensive neighborhood maintenance of our, of our neighborhoods. Second is reinstituting the housing rehab program to help low-income residents be able to make minor rehab corrections to their house. And then, three, as we're concerned about a rising housing crisis, cost, and the housing crisis within our area, looking at a down payment assistance program, so that the residents that live in our neighborhoods that are, are renting in neighborhoods like Lowell, where it's only 15% homeownership, and West Fresno, that's only 45% homeownership, that more existing residents can actually buy their homes in the neighborhoods they live in.
Thank you for that. And so, it's just serendipity, I guess, that growth and revitalization was brought up. And we're going to go right down the row this time in order, starting with Miguel, to Tate, to Nelson, to Brian. What are the next steps to take with downtown Fresno? Should the city, city stay aggressive, or should it let growth happen organically?
Me first?
That's a sixty-second one.
The, the most important step that the city needs to take with downtown Fresno is an investment in infrastructure. Although we reopened Fulton Mall, the vast majority of infrastructure underneath the ground is still hundreds of years old, and is not in a position to sustain additional growth. Without that investment in infrastructure, which is the primary responsibility of the city of Fresno, development can occur. The housing that we need in downtown cannot occur. The businesses that we want to flourish cannot occur, because what's taking place is developers are being asked, one at a time, to pay for that full infrastructure that goes far beyond the scope of their project, and therefore, installing significant projects. Secondly, and equally important, is the permitting process. It's still taking a year for businesses to be able to get a permit for outdoor dining, even though it's a right, and it was approved years ago with the reopening of Fulton Mall. So, permitting and infrastructure are the two most important responsibilities of the city, and that's the next priorities in order for them to actually allow downtown to flourish.
And so, quickly, I have a follow-up on that, which is, where's the funding going to come from for this infrastructure?
The utilities department.
Infrastructure's expensive.
The public utilities department. We just spent $500 million building a new southeast water plant. The mayor was proposing rate increases for water, solid waste, and sewage. I think the increase is rolling for water. But the public utilities department is a significant department. I know part of their plans call, call for a $55 million maintenance facility. I think that kind of money can be better spent actually fixing the pipes underneath the ground that provide us the critical services as residents.
Thank you for that. And Tate Hill?
So, yeah, for downtown, I believe we have to be intentional about its development. For far too long, we, I think, have allowed things just to happen within our city. And for us to revive and revitalize downtown, we must be intentional about infrastructure, about our permitting and planning process, you know, just as one that has been involved with small businesses that have, have very small modifications. It has taken them months and months to get those modifications made. And so, we must reduce the bureaucracy and red tape, and actually coordination of the planning department with other departments within the city. So, planning, fire, police, and so forth. The same kind of support that we provide to large businesses, that we also provide those to small. And then, just as we did with the Fulton Mall, we need to be able to attract state and federal dollars to be able to match with the local resources, so we can make the proper investment.
Thank you for that. Nelson Asparza, what about downtown? How, how should we approach it now?
Sure. Just to preface the question, my number one priority will be serving District Seven and focusing on infrastructure investment in my district. I think downtown, what has been done there in the last 10 years is really incredible, from where it was to where it is now. And I'd really like to see that version of redevelopment and tackling the blights and revitalizing neighborhoods. I'd like to see that version happen in District Seven. But downtown is a, a main artery of our city. And I think, with respect to downtown, we should not fight against the tide, you know, what the identity of downtown has become. You know, it's been revitalized, and I think, more than anything, it's almost become sort of a government hub. The most glaring recent example of that is the relocation of State Center Community College District, now moving their office, main offices from Welton over into downtown Fresno. And so, I think we need to capitalize on its strengths, right, and work around the realities, right? Like the fact that it is a government hub, and it drives during the day, but we do struggle, you know, with businesses staying open at night.
Thank you. Brian, your thoughts on downtown and the considerable investment that's put in, and what our expectations should be going forward?
I believe that we could do a better job of marketing to potential businesses that might be interested in coming to downtown, because we have kind of a unique situation in Fresno, where we have opportunity zones that have been created by virtue of the change in the federal tax code. And there's a lot of businesses and cheap businesses, business space that exists in downtown. In fact, I was talking to a small business owner yesterday, and they were mentioning that they might move downtown because the conditional use permit, I guess the fees were waived or a lot cheaper, and applying for a license to sell beer and wine was, I think it was free, actually, is what they were telling me. But I think that we have a marketing issue. And one of the things that I would like to be involved with, not just downtown, but for business development in the heart of Fresno, which is District Seven, my home that I've been in for the last almost 10 years now or more, is to invite businesses to come to Fresno and to give them a tour of all the great things that we can do here for small businesses, for mid-sized businesses, and deliver the message that, hey, if you want to do business in the city of Fresno, we're open. And you guys can, you can also enjoy the tax benefits that exist in Fresno. There's a moratorium on capital gains taxes. That's at the federal level. It's not at the city level. And I think marketing and educating other people throughout the state about the great opportunities that exist in Fresno and the great workforce that we've got in Fresno would be something I would get behind in a very significant way.
So, what?
No, Bill, I, I actually want to address something that both Brian and Nelson said. And I think it's, it actually is important for us to make investment in downtown. All great cities have great downtowns. It has, and it permeates into the neighborhoods. And so, I think it's really important for us to focus on local businesses. And we see examples like, like Bitwise, like Monna Coffee and others, and, and making that investment with our own local businesses. While I, I, I appreciate the concept of attracting businesses from outside of the area, we need to look at how we make that investment with our own city and value the businesses that we have here.
Well, I'm just going to jump back in here.
So, at this point, and we attempted this before, so, the next seven minutes.
I'm going to steal twenty seconds from Miguel in here.
And moderate yourself. We can't have people piling on, because I had a question on here. How do we grow Fresno's economy so that we can fund the things we need without special taxes? And Tate, you let it off. Miguel's been very good tonight. So, Miguel, lead this discussion on how we grow the economy of Fresno, so we don't have to, we don't have to rely on these taxes.
You know, Bill, I appreciate you saying that I've been very good today. My mom would appreciate that a lot. She tells me to behave myself quite often. But the first, what, what great cities do is invest in themselves with basic amenities. You've seen parts and flashes of that for us in Fresno. We invest in Measure C, which built 180, 41, 168. We invest in Measure Z, which built up our zoo from almost closure and bankruptcy to one of the best zoos in the nation. We invest in Measure B by keeping our libraries and opening libraries across the county. And I can go on and on. You know, at State Center, the community just supported half a billion dollars from new college campuses across our valley, which is greatly needed. And so, you start with investing yourself with baseline things that everybody needs in order to reach that American dream. And you also do that by investing in local versus giving away your tax revenue to corporations that don't live here, don't reinvest in here, you know?
So, you've been very clear on that and made that point. So, let me ask Tate Hill, the Amazon, what brought Amazon here? Was that a good use of taxpayer funds or not?
Well, you know, and, and I think it's important for us to clarify, those are, we're not receiving those developer, developer fees, but we're not, those are not monies that we had in the coffers and we gave to Amazon. Those are monies that we forego, forewent, as we have done with other businesses, that actually bring in jobs, you know, at, you know, Amazon started at $15 an hour at more than 2,000 employees. That's significant income in our community that creates jobs. Those individuals spend their money locally. Though, and what we're seeing now actually is a number of the individuals that were on social service programs are now actually getting those jobs. They're working through EDC and Department of Social Services. So, we actually have a net benefit from reducing people's dependency on some of those social services and creating economic opportunity. The, and I'm sure Nelson could tell us about the multiplier effect of, of creating jobs within our communities. So, those are, so the Amazons are not necessarily a bad thing, but we also want to make sure that we're making investment with our local businesses.
So, I just want to be clear. You're, you're okay with what the city council and the mayor did on that?
Yes.
Okay, and so, what's that?
But let me add that.
Hold on. Oh, go ahead.
We, any other small business, Chef Paul's in Chinatown, the Fish Company, the Tower District, nobody else gets to forego their future taxes. Nobody else gets to forego future fees. As residents, nobody waives your future property taxes. You have to pay them, or you lose out your property. So, just because we didn't give them cash on hand? So just because we didn't give them cash on hand doesn't mean that we didn't give up a significant amount of revenue and it's very difficult and this is what makes governing very hard for folks. On Monday, you give corporations 70 million in future revenue that you're waiving. On Tuesday, you're asking taxpayers to tax themselves for 15 years to pay for police and fire that those revenues would have paid for. You can't be hypocritical in your policymaking. And if it's, if it's great to do that, then let's do that for everyone. Let's do that for Chef Paul.
So I think that that's been pointed out and I'd like to direct the question towards growing Fresno's economy so that we're less reliant on special taxes and also having a general fund so that we have a high quality of life. We know that Fresno has done this to bring $15 an hour jobs here and those are appreciated and needed. Nelson and Brian, can you talk about what it takes to grow the economy and have higher skilled jobs here? We know that Clovis is enjoying quite a bit of prosperity because it's attracting many jobs in the medical services field. Want to start off, Nelson?
Yes, sir. So I have a few points to make on this matter. So with respect to the debate over here about the, you know, Amazon, the Ultras versus small businesses, the city needs to be intentional about, you know, giving away the revenue, whether that's via some type of incentive or via tax break, it's giving away revenue, however, whichever way you want to paint it. And so every great regional economy has some kind of high value industry, right? So in Silicon Valley, technology, that's their, that's their exportable high value industry. Every time you create a tech job in Silicon Valley, that trickles down to create five to six residual jobs. When we create, you know, ag job here in the valley, it creates one to two residual jobs. And so we need to diversify our economy and I'm not saying I have the answer as to what that industry will be, but we have to be open to ideas and really again be intentional about what industry we want to bring here. And I don't think low wage warehousing is the answer to creating jobs and creating more revenue opportunity for the city of Fresno. Second point is, you know, when it comes to, for folks opening their small businesses, right, it is ultimately going to be the crime level, the infrastructure investment, the environment that the government creates, right, that ultimately impacts their success of that business rather than an initial, you know, let us waive your, your permit or let us waive these initial fees. We see businesses open all the time, but we also see businesses turnover. And so I'm more concerned about the quality of the types of jobs we're creating rather than just the quantity for bragging rights. And the last point, again, the two tools I mentioned earlier, they are self-sustaining mechanism for, for revenue that can be used for regional infrastructure. So what the, what RDAs used to do and what the new tools I'm proposing will do is they increase the property value of some revitalized property and that increase in value, that is taxed at the same level and that increment goes into a pot and is reinvested and that doesn't raise taxes at all. And that's a way to finance regional infrastructure and invest in District Seven.
So, so I want to be clear, if you're elected to the city council, you will work with the state legislature to bring back RDAs?
No, I will capitalize on the enhanced infrastructure financing districts and the community revitalization investment authorities that they have created, which are a reincarnated version of RDAs with less zero opportunity for that fraud and corruption that Brian mentioned earlier.
Thank you. Brian, you get the last word on growing Fresno's economy and what it needs.
Okay, well, I'm just going to take on some of the last points that pivoted out of this question about RDAs and the enhanced infrastructure finance district. I just think that people should do their own homework out there if this is really something that fascinates you with what Nelson is espousing because it's, it's a little more complicated than two minutes and you should look it up and you could Google again why RDAs are bad. And you can go through and you can read about the differences, including the enhanced infrastructure finance districts. There's a shell game that kind of gets played with the revenue. So when we tax, for instance, property taxes, a portion of that will go to schools, a portion will go here, a portion will go there. With the RDA program, it's, there's a moratorium on where it goes, it stays within the RDA. It's, it's not a good, good program, it's kind of a shell game with taxes and where the money is going. I think that what would be more of a positive benefit to the area is something similar to what Luis Chavez was moving for with the Kings Canyon Corridor. Their, small businesses are the economic engine for this community and we as a city, as a government, as a society, we can incentivize where those businesses are going to go by giving a carrot approach or a stick approach. So, you know, here's something, come over here, like what we're doing with downtown. Or, you know, we're going to zone you away from this area so you go over there. With Blackstone, with Belmont, with Tulare, with these corridors of areas that have been historically kind of left behind, we should give incentives and we should for small businesses, mid-sized businesses, any businesses that want to come to this area to improve the way that it looks, to improve the opportunities that exist and to improve the way of life. And we can do that and there is already a path that has been paved for that.
Thank you. So now a 60-second question and we'll start with Tate Hill. What's the biggest difference between yourself and your opponent in this race?
I think it comes down to our approach of how we would govern. I'm a person, because I've worked in nonprofits and worked in the business industry, that I try to find the best solution, the win to deliver results for the people of District Three. And my opponent is sometimes known as a bit of a bully. And so, you know, we have to collaborate. You have six other council members, you have a mayor. As a city, we are addressing, trying to address issues like homelessness that are going to require us to partner with the county of Fresno and, and other agencies. And so, you know, trying to do a thing alone or trying to always just trying to make another elected official to do something has not worked for District Three. We have been left behind. And so my goal is to collaborate with the other council members to address issues in like districts, like the south part of the Fresno, to make sure that we have comprehensive solutions that address homelessness, that address chronic poverty in our neighborhoods and unemployment.
Miguel Arias, what's the biggest difference between yourself and Tate Hill?
You know, I would describe it as simply experience. I've been working at a bill and dollar, the largest employer in the valley floor in an executive role. I've been on the college board for four years. This isn't my first rodeo, nor am I naive of the challenges ahead of us. To your point on collaboration and working together, we wouldn't have been able to land a college campus in West Fresno if it wasn't for my ability, trustee Payne's ability and our ability as governing board members to collaborate with one another. We wouldn't have relocated all our district offices from a college district of 45,000 students to downtown Fresno to be part of the revitalization if it wasn't for our ability to collaborate. And we surely wouldn't have been able to open college courses in our high school campuses if we weren't able to collaborate. But to his point, sometimes you do have to stand up. You have to stand up institutions because when you don't stand up for your residents and your community, you end up in litigation. And that's exactly what happened at the city of Fresno and my opponent was an advisor to the mayor for 10 years. He was on a district implementation committee for multiple years and sat silent during the whole time when that stuff took place and we ended up being sued.
You know what, as, as, as a member of the District Three Implementation Committee, we're advisors to the city council member and one of the things I did as the chair was to help to halt the expansion of Darling International when it tried to go from 800,000 pounds of meat rendering to 1.6 million pounds of meat rendering. And that same kind of working with the other members is what I did when our organization, when I was president of the Fresno Metro Black Chamber of Commerce, worked with the Hispanic Chamber, the Asian Business Resource Center to, and to motivate State Center to have a local contracting vendor policy when they put forward its half a billion dollar bond. It had no intentions, no plans, no process to make sure that local money was going to be spent and that those monies were going to be spent with diverse businesses.
And to your point, Tate, you're absolutely right and we own that responsibility. But you know who also is in that position, the city of Fresno. They have no diversity policy, they have no local contracting, they shipped in workers from Arizona and Texas to build Amazon and Alta and each time that that occurred, you stayed silent.
The city of Fresno didn't build Amazon, just as Fresno Unified built Gaston Elementary, Gaston Middle School and not one person from West Fresno was hired to work on that project. One of the things I would make sure is that we actually utilized our small business diverse, diversity programs for federal dollars, but also I would put together an ordinance for a local business diversity ordinance for the city of Fresno so that we actually utilize our small businesses, that we invest in those businesses, that we use those vendors and so that people have economic opportunities when we utilize our city resources.
You're absolutely right and one of your largest contributors today is Harris Construction who built Gaston, that $52 million facility, and I never heard you years ago asking us to build local, to hire local or to do anything with the local companies.
Actually I did. As president of the Fresno Metro Black Chamber, we tried to get Fresno Unified to even participate in our Small Business Diversity Expo. We tried to engage with the, the, the planning, your procurement officer, and we got nowhere. We brought contractors.
We're going to cut it right there. That's, that's a good debate, gentlemen, and I've heard people say that you have the same views on a lot of things, but as we approach November 6th, it's clear that there are different forks in the road going on in District Three and that provides voters with healthy choices. That's a good thing. So Brian, we'll start with you. What's the biggest difference between you and your opponent? And, you know, we're going to start with a minute each, but I'm sure things will be raised.
It looks like it. So I'm a longtime resident of District Seven, I've lived in the community for going on 10 years and I didn't relocate to run for this office. This is something that I got engaged with this process because I've had crime at my home and my wife's car being broken into and neighbors having similar complaints. And so I got involved in this because I believe that I would be a good responsible steward for the community to lift up neighborhoods. And I think that the real world experience that I have with helping businesses get open and succeed and myself being a business person and having the experiences of signing the front of the check, having to, you know, meet payroll and all the nitty gritty things that go along with employing people and counseling people that do employ people, along with, it's not for nothing that I'm supported by the Police Officers Association, the firemen, the transit workers, the chief of police. There's, there's a difference between us that has given rise to a belief that I would be the best servant for this area. And for the three people in the room that live in District Seven, I'd be happy to talk with you afterwards and communicate more about that.
Nelson, what's the difference, biggest difference between you and Brian Whelan?
Yeah, sure. So I want to remind folks that both Brian and I, one commonality is that we've actually both run a office in the District Seven area before. One big difference is that the folks in District Seven have agreed with my values and elected me and they rejected his values when he ran for Congress. And he might not, he might not have relocated, run for this office, but he did relocate from Clovis to run for Congress against Jim Costa.
No, that's actually a lie, so that's, that's too bad.
I'm just talking, I'm just looking at county records, that's all. You can explain that however you need to.
So I moved into the district in 2009, so just correct that. And I did run for Congress in 2012 and Congress is 700,000 people that stretch from Fresno to Merced County and I did just fine in our district. And I know that you're, you've run for one office, you've been successful and within five months you decided you didn't want that office, so you decided to run for this one.
So as I was saying.
So let's go ahead with Nelson.
So as I was saying, the folks in District Seven have spoken before very loudly that they agree with my values and they do not agree, agree with, with Brian's values.
Again, that's not true though.
Electorally speaking, Brian, let me finish.
All right.
And so.
Try to keep it to the truth though this time.
The election results are truth. So, you know, with that, you know, I've had the opportunity to represent most of District Seven, the overwhelming majority, probably 75 to 85%, of people that live there as their Fresno County Board of Education trustee. And I think the difference between Brian and I is I have a record of outcomes in this community, not only in my job teaching here at this college and touching lives that way, but in advocating for dual immersion bilingual education programs in our district and supporting and casting many votes to support the new Career Tech Education High School in District Seven. So the longstanding relationships that I have in District Seven because of the representation I provided to the area already, the responsiveness level that I will provide is that I will continue to provide as the city council member for the area. And really, I've said this before earlier in the forum, it's really working together with the residents that's going to produce outcomes for this community, not just one person up on a dais behind a desk making decisions.
So I would just say it's kind of silly to make that as the difference because most of that's demonstrably not true. Nelson ran for, or attempted to run for city council in 2016 and was convinced not to and then ran for the board position that he's on and then within five months decided he didn't want that, he wanted to run for this office, which is, I wasn't going to bring it up, but you did, so I'm going to do that right back to you. But the reason I bring up the fact that I've been in the community for a long time is because of my community participation in mentoring youth through the Center for Advanced Research and Technology, because of my community engagement that I was invited to serve on boards. I serve on the San Joaquin River Association Board, I'm at the board at City Hall for the Capitol Oversight Committee, I'm on the Playland and Storyland Board because of a conversation I had with a neighbor about why is this, you know, happening, let's reopen it. So the longstanding bond and ties I've got in my community is something that I'm trying to leverage to help the community. I'm not trying to leverage the office I just ran for for the purpose of running for another one, that's a big difference. And when I ran for Congress in 2012, what I was talking about then is what I'm talking about now. The highest concentration of poverty in the country is in 93701, which is in this district. And we can do a lot better than that. And I believe that the same old politicians with the same old statements and the same old claims are not solving our problems. And when it comes down to it, we as a community need to engage, get together and fix things. And that's what I've been doing with people over the last two years is I've been forming neighborhood watch programs and getting people out. So, you know, those are the realities and the truths, not what we just heard.
So we're going to cut it there for you and Brian, 15, I mean Nelson, 15 seconds.
So if we're sticking to truths and facts, political gossip about Nelson Asparza might run for this or might run for that does not count as fact at all. And I'll point out the very last difference in the last five seconds I have. I'm going to be an independent council member who carries the vision of District Seven and the residents who live there. I'm not going to be, I'm going to be beholden to special interests and the mayor at City Hall, as Brian has demonstrated he will be.
When does that happen?
Thank you for that. So many of the members of the audience are students at Fresno City College and this question is fairly straightforward. We know, we know that education is vital to Fresno's economy and future prosperity. As a council member, how will you champion education? And we'll start with Miguel Arias, 60 seconds.
Sure.
We want the highlights.
One of the most important aspects of a city and a council is to understand your role and in what lane you drive in. And one of the challenges that I found in education for the last decade is that everybody, especially City Hall, wants to partner with education to get things done, but the partnership typically is one way. For an example, we're trying to build a college campus in Southeast Fresno to build a modern state-of-the-art facility for fire, police and first responders and the city is asking us to build a fire station for them because they don't have the resources that they've given out over the years to build a fire station for the community. Here at State Center and at Fresno Unified, we spend millions of dollars paying for police officers because the city hasn't been able to find a way to provide everyone a public safety baseline service across the city. It's always taken from Peter to Pay Paul. So one of the best things that we can do is, one, attract industries that allow for upward mobility. Attract industries in education, in healthcare and telecommunications where people can start at one position, move up. And two, fund your basic responsibilities so that education doesn't have to do it for us.
Tate Hill, how would you champion education on the Fresno City Council?
I would, one, work with the various trustees for Fresno Unified and Central and Washington, Washington Union Unified within the district to have a comprehensive workforce development plan that would support the school. that would support the school districts' goals around academic and career tech, but also support the businesses. One of the biggest challenges I hear from employers is to be able to have a qualified workforce. And I want to make sure that those residents are coming from District Three, that people that live in District Three can actually work in businesses within their community. And then second, also to make sure that the neighborhoods around our schools are safe. There is a symbiotic relationship between schools and neighborhoods, and I want to make sure that District Three is a choice neighborhood in Fresno.
Thank you. Nelson Esparza, 60 seconds.
Yeah, so as an educator here and as a school board member, I have had the privilege of developing relationships with all of different school board members across all different layers here in Fresno. I do want to continue to partner with the city, workforce development programs, schools like C-Tech that we've opened at the county office of education level, make sure that we are supporting our students in such a way that when they come out of there, they have the opportunity to have a job and work here in our community. I do agree with Tate on about the school safety. And, you know, I lost my thoughts on, I had something really big. But, you know, I'm happy to talk to folks afterwards.
Brian Whelan, how would you champion education as a city council member?
Well, I had a conversation recently with someone who was an educator at, I think it was Roosevelt, and they were telling me that one of the students had gone missing for about a week, and they went to go find out what had happened. And they come to find out that the student had actually been used basically as collateral for his mother, who was a prostitute. And the person was trying to get money from the family member. And I think that really, when kids are on their way to school, they're faced with so many different challenges and problems that we as a city need to do a better job of trying to address some of the crime that we've got in our areas and do a better job of having the citizens and community members and neighbors and leaders really step up to the plate in some of these areas that are very much underserved to identify, for instance, you know, I was instrumental in helping some people recently stop a prostitution house. We need to get more engaged in the community to help the community give the schoolchildren a pathway to school that's safe. And then the other is, you know, we can talk about technical schools and other opportunities to engage children, but got a red flag.
So we'll go right back down the table on this one, and it's fairly simple. 60 seconds for your answer. Should City Hall fund immigration support services? Tell us yes or no, and the factors that influenced your decision.
So as Nelson alluded to earlier, I am an attorney. I do volunteer my services. In fact, recently I had a booth, I forget where it was, I've done this a couple of times recently, to volunteer to help people that need immigration help. So my family, I'm a family from a family of immigrants. My grandparents came over from Argentina, and my first language is Spanish, actually, because growing up, I learned Spanish from my mom and my grandparents. So immigration is extremely important to our area, and it's something that as a professional, I volunteer my time and resources to help people with. And I do that also in labor and employment disputes. A lot of people that are undocumented get taken advantage of, and I help them to make sure that they get paid what's owed to them. In terms of using the city's resources, I don't think that that's correct. I think that's incorrect. I think that the bar, the local bar association, which is the Association of Attorneys, they come together, we come together, and we offer services. And I think that the city could do a better job of letting people know that there are these services that exist to address a need that exists in the community. It's a need that a lot of local attorneys are willing to fill, that I fill, that other people fill. And so I would be happy to be a partner in addressing that by using the tremendous wealth of attorneys in the area that want to help and are helping. But I do not believe that the city should use its resources to do that because we have extremely pressing needs and a very limited budget. But I do think that we should call on the local people.
So we're going to cut it there, well past the time limit. Nelson Esparza, should City Hall funds be used, yes or no, for immigration services?
Sure. So this is personal to me because, you know, I'm the first in my family, on the other side, to be born here in this country and have full citizenship rights. The immigrant community here in Fresno, you know, myself and my family being a part of that, we, these folks are our neighbors. Our kids go to school together. And I think these folks in particular are at a higher risk of being, you know, ripped from their daily lives. And so I don't think it's a stretch to say that if the federal government is going to sit on its hands, that other levels of government can't step in and offer a hand to those folks, to those communities. So I would be in support of, you know, at the very least, a Office of Immigrant Liaison Affairs and possibly even a legal defense fund. Because again, those folks face the risk of being ripped from their daily lives, a risk that a lot of us others do not face.
Thank you. Tate Hill, immigration services funding at City Hall, yes or no? And why have you, the why behind your answer?
I would say no. There's a number of things that the city does well. Legal services for immigrants is not one of them. We've tried to do business loans, and that didn't work. I think there are things that the city does well, which is provide public safety, provides our streets and roads, our water services. But as a council member and as one that's worked in the nonprofit field, I would be one of the first persons to look at leveraging local philanthropy, national philanthropy, to make sure that we have sufficient resources. The amount of money that the city would even propose to put in would be insufficient to effectively support illegal services. And so I do think the city has a role in making sure that its hate crime unit responds to issues, that it makes sure that it has in-language access to services so those who speak another language can access those services. And then again, as a city council member, leveraging kind of the bully pulpit and role to utilize other resources, like even the San Joaquin Law School's legal defense fund.
Thank you. Miguel Arias, should City Hall funding be used for immigration services?
You know, this is a far more personal conversation for me because I immigrated to this country when I was two years old, and I was considered undocumented, like many of our residents here. And I know what it's like to pass the civics test in order to be eligible to vote, and I know what it's like to wait in line for years to get your legal status adjusted. You folks here keep on referencing the fact that we have limited funds. Let me remind us that immigrants contribute a billion dollars worth of taxes in this region, a billion, far more than Amazon does. The city has money to have a sister city with Armenia, with France, with Germany, with Italy, with Japan, with China. They have money for that. We know that a legal defense fund is not to serve everyone undocumented in this city. It's about the message that you sent, that this city is a welcoming place to this generation of immigrants, as it has been to previous generations of immigrants. And what I would ask Tate and Brian is if you're not convinced that's needed, why don't you go into Roosevelt with me, Edison High School, and meet some of those undocumented kids who are scared to show up to school? The biggest absenteeism we have is because kids are scared to go to school over immigration rates. Why don't you go to those schools, meet with those kids, look at them in their face, and tell them that a sister city with China, Japan is far more important than to send a message that this city welcomes them and will protect them like anybody else.
So Tate, 15, 20 seconds for rebuttal.
Yes, and I do believe that we should be protecting those individuals, and we do that through public safety. A legal defense fund, I believe, is not the best way for the city to do that. We can make immigrants feel welcome in a number of different ways, is making sure that they feel safe in their neighborhoods, that everyone feels safe where they live, that they have economic opportunities, that they can open a business and be an entrepreneur. But I don't believe that the legal defense fund is the best use of resources.
And Brian, you were mentioned by name. Quickly on this, wrap it up.
You know, I think that, Miguel, unfortunately, I have a set of skills you just don't have, okay? I can help people in that setting, and I have.
Spanish skills, right?
No, I'm an attorney and you're not. And that helps me to help those people because they've got to process immigration. So let me finish talking. When I'm done talking, you can talk, okay?
That wasn't the case.
So this is, this is the situation, is that if you're going to follow through with that, and if you want me to help, I will help, okay? You call me when there's somebody that's telling you, hey, I need this or I need that with an immigration situation. I'll help. I had that same conversation with the person that ran in the primary. I never got a phone call. There are a lot of attorneys out there that want to help, and it's no two ways about it, and that they are volunteering their services. And when we get the, you know, I'm more righteous than thou, it doesn't help anything, but I'm happy to offer my services, and you call me, okay?
So Brian, let me just finish with this.
Let's wrap it there.
Let me finish with this. City College has a dream center because we have 700 kids here at this campus alone. Fresno Unified has a dream center. If you want to volunteer your immigration services, by all means, you've had plenty of opportunity to do that. You don't have to have me refer people to you.
Okay, this is kind of a joke here. Those are not the only ways that you can do it. I do it in other ways. So do a lot of people, okay? I don't know why you're trying to cast aspersions at me. I'm not running against you. You're running against the guy next to you, right? I think that one of the things, you know, to what Tate was saying earlier, is you try to bully people, Miguel. You know, you're not going to bully me. I do this for a living. I get people that try to attack me.
You're the last person.
And at this point, we're not, we're not going to bully the audience either.
But Brian is the last person to issue the casting of those bullying.
We're at that time where we're going to have closing statements, and you have one minute to state your best case to the voters of your district, remembering that tonight's forum's being broadcast live on CMAC. It's brought to you by GV Wire and Fresno City College, and this forum will be replayed on the CMAC channel. So people have an opportunity who have not made up their mind to see and hear you and evaluate everything tonight. And this is your final chance. You get one minute, and we're going to start with Nelson Esparza in District Seven.
Sure. So to the District Seven residents who are watching right now, you know, I very much look forward to continuing to represent our district. I believe that I have a record of outcomes in this community, and that comes both in the form of me rolling my sleeves up, being in the classroom, touching lives one at a time, but also not forgetting that we need to have an impact on a large mass scale in our community. And that's why I ran for the county school board, that's why I'm running for city council, because I believe we need to change lives more than just one at a time. My office will be your office when I'm council member. I'm an easy guy to get ahold of. My cell phone number is literally on every single flyer that I send out into the community. Folks text me, they call me, they email me. I will always respond and will always be there to help you when you call. And so, you know, I humbly ask for your support, for your vote. Thank you for watching.
Thank you. Brian Whelan, your pitch to the voters of District Seven. You have one minute.
Thank you for coming and to the two people that didn't sleep through it in the back. Again, you've probably heard back and forth about where we stand on some of the issues, but there's a lot of other ones, too, that are out there that both of us have ideas about. And I encourage people to kind of contact either of us and explore, you know, what we think about different things. I really do believe very strongly in the great talent and resources that we have in the people in District Seven. And that's why I'm running to represent the people there so that I can help to harness the great skills we have and the great talent we have to lift up neighborhoods, to work on building a senior center, to work on getting people to address some of the crime and the blight and the unlawful dumping that goes on in our area and really brings our district down. I'd like to be your servant, and for that reason, the police officers, the firefighters, the chief of police, transit workers, professional employees association, support me. And if people are interested, you can also access my phone number a variety of ways. It's 436-9488. Be happy to talk to people.
Thank you. Tate Hill, your closing statement.
So I want to thank the people of District Three and the city of Fresno for participating in this discourse. This election is really important. You have an opportunity to have and influence a voice and to be heard on who has the opportunity to influence decisions that impact your neighborhood, that impacts your family, and impacts our entire community. And so I ask you to look at both of us, look at who has been involved in our community, who has been engaged, who will be accountable to you as the voters of District Three and our community. And I plan to be one that will listen, that will collaborate, that will make sure that we get things done for District Three, that our community is safer, that our community is a place that people choose to live, and that our city, the city of Fresno, is a better city. Thank you.
Thank you. Miguel Arias?
Thank you. First of all, thank you all for coming, and I do appreciate the discourse with my colleagues here. And I appreciate Tate's engagement in this conversation. He really is a nice guy, and I really do like him as a person. This race and this campaign has been about making sure that we continue the momentum that we started. As state senator, we're building two colleges in South Fresno. We're investing $100 million in expansion of City College. We're relocating our headquarters downtown. And in that process, what we heard time and time again is that the quality of neighborhoods around us, that the city fully controls, the quality of public safety, of infrastructure, of partnerships, is what's going to be able to make sure that those investments become a shift in our local economy and our local neighborhoods. And I've had the pleasure of hearing from downtown folks, they want to keep the momentum going. Central Unified wants complete neighborhoods. West Fresno wants us to right the wrongs that were made against them. Chinatown wants us to reconnect them to downtown, and that's what I'm going to focus on as a council member of District Three.
So let's give all the candidates a hand. Thank you for coming out this evening, and remember, if you don't vote, you forfeit your voice in our democracy. I'd also like to thank Dr. Carol Goldsmith at Fresno City College for co-sponsoring the forum tonight and providing this grand venue, and also the team at GV Wire, led by Operations Manager Randy Reed and Brian Harley and the staff of CMAC. Thanks for tuning in, and good night from Fresno City College.